Is this escaped comments and proposed a hundred.
Yeah.
So thi- this is, this is different.
It's, this map is for that and you have that two eighty is what has been built. And they wanna do an additional twenty.
Didn't, didn't we give them that right to do that?
No, that's, no, that zoning can do that. We're, we're reporting on it and then.
When do we get to the someone I hate?
That one?
Not this.
That one's a blue pub, same thing.
Not the, not the, this one. This is the call control room?
No, that's us.
That's tonight too?
Yeah.
And we can, we have to make a motion on that to pass it or pass it tonight?
Alright, I don't think we have to. Bill's gonna talk.
Okay.
I'll do what? Shuffle the agenda to get Bill on next?
Oh, look at that.
Yeah, okay.
You gonna put the things up on the screen? The plan of the salt shed at the sewer path, did you see in the survey?
Yes.
I was like, I don't remember anything.
You're all relaxed and wonderful.
Yes, I am. Have you caught more fish than the Lord?
Well, you're never doing as much as you think you're gonna.
Yeah.
But I caught a few.
That's right up there with people who live at the beach, they don't go to it.
You never, you never hike all mountains you thought you were gonna.
Where did you go to?
It's in New Hampshire.
What part?
Southern end of the White Mountains, Conway.
Oh, you spent summer today.
Oh, yeah.
Cogmont.
Lake Winnipesaukee?
Yeah. Cogmont.
You're going to Charleston tomorrow?
Well.
Good or bad? I hope good. Okay.
Okay, moving real.
Good. It should be, uh, probably a little quieter than when everybody's off.
I am bushed.
Yeah, I think, uh, September is when you're best suited to take advantage of it.
I actually went blind today for thirty seconds.
A water department.
I don't even know why. I was standing there and all of a sudden I, everything went to a blur.
I'm on a roll.
Blur, and I couldn't see the people in front of me. All I could tell was that it was light out instead of dark out.
Well, you do sit down there.
I had to sit down, yeah. I was, it was, I was blind. I could walk right in front of me, I couldn't tell you where. Yeah, I know.
No, we're, we're, we're through. For big stuff? We got two alternates if you want back.
No, 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 we're cool. We just get through it without, you know.
Going blind.
Hmm?
Without going blind.
Without.
Does anybody know about the accident on Flanders?
I heard it was a bicycle and I heard it was nearly fatal.
Yes, motorcycle.
Oh, motorcycle, alright, okay.
Tonight?
Another one of those?
Close the road.
On one sixty-one.
I was waiting here Gordon Khan.
How far down? Toward the four corners?
Any, any idea where?
Well, there's a lot of glass still there. Yeah, they had, uh, close the road.
Uh, we wait. Oh, that's right. And we're in for it. Gary, when I move stuff on the schedule, do I need a motion?
Yeah.
And it's the motion to... Move this up? Can I make that motion?
You can just say you want to hear it.
That's what I usually do, but I thought I might just. It's not just.
Do you wanna move the eight twenty fours earlier?
Yeah, we wanna move, uh, the eight twenty four A, which is what Bill Shear is here for, up in front of Nottingham Hills subdivision. Actually, up to, yeah, ahead of Fraser too. The Fraser thing's two seconds though, cause the public hearing's open.
Right. So, what are you moving ahead?
The eight twenty four referrals.
Eight twenty four referral A.
Both of them.
Oh, great.
So we can go home early.
Motion to move item five of our, uh, meeting agenda to, uh, earlier, immediately following the, or as the next discussion item.
Second.
Motion and second. All those, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shear, thanks for, uh, joining us. You're on.
Bill Shear, Deputy Director of Public Works. Um, actually, this is the second month for the eight dash twenty four referral for the, uh, field services building improvements. We're planning to move the salt shed up to eight Capital Drive and also our fueling facility up there. You have a memo in front of you from last month. We talked about it in detail. I mean, I don't think all of you were there. But we didn't have the consistency wording with the P O C D at that point in time. So, I'm here to answer any questions you have from last month, or I could go over it again, or Gary, do you have any?
Um, well, I, I keep providing the memo, uh, for the, uh, regarding my, uh, facilities. Provide facility and services for municipal government that meet future needs, maintain quality, maintenance, place, facility, drive by town people, while maintaining, uh, private. Based on the information submitted, uh, found in the book.
It's loose, it's loose.
It's loose.
I think definitely.
Based on the information submitted, uh, so based on the information that, uh, that's submitted, uh, referral, um, found in the salt dome, who approved the town future small precarious, has dome capable of holding up the possible vulnerability of the salt first, current salt shed, which was less than half, does reduce the potential of salt shortage. The only facility that ain't capital drive will also increase efficiency, allow people to deal with their storage, so provide staff oversight, uh, fueling facility at Roxbury Road, takes advantage of existing town facilities, uh, as seen, makes the main fueling school buses, water sewers, public facilities, basically, stay and walk around.
Uh, Mr. Shear, I just have one question. Sometimes we see these things and it seems like a straight line as there's only one option. Is there a second Plan B for this salt dome? Is this the only site, or was there a second one that was in the mix?
The only other option would be to stay where we are and build it bigger.
Okay.
That would be the only other option, but all our equipment is at this location, so it's by far a less better option.
Where is it? Of Roxbury? Where?
The current salt shed is on Ro-, uh, on Roxbury Road, right where Remagna intersects, and the, the proposed one is at eight Capital Drive, where our, our field services building is now.
Uh, at the footing of the memo, there, there's a motion.
One. I, I did have one other question.
If we're ready.
You did, is, just for my recollection, for my benefit perhaps, that you're going to leave some salt at the Remagna and, um, Roxbury intersection for the school buses, or what, what was the plan there?
We, 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 we keep a small pile of sand and salt for homeowners.
Oh, I see.
That they can come so that they can get out of their driveways and such.
Okay, there was no school bus connection or anything?
No.
Nothing there?
No, no, no. So, our, our plan is right now is to leave a small pile there for, for people to, so they can come and get, fill, fill up a five gallon bucket so that they can get in and out of their driveways.
Okay.
So, in case you didn't know, that we provide free.
I didn't know that.
Salt and sand to town res-, town residents only, and you can come and fill up a five gallon bucket and take it home with you.
Wow, that is great.
I think perhaps what he's referring to, where he's referring to is to the, uh, leaving, uh, one of the gas pumps there.
Okay, it wasn't salt, it was, that's what it was.
We are, we are leaving, currently, right now, there is a, at Roxbury Road, there's an underground gasoline tank and an underground diesel tank.
Mm-hmm.
We're going, which are expiring. We need to get those out of the ground. You don't want underground storage tanks anyway. So, we're gonna move them to the facilities building and eight Capital Drive to above ground gasoline and diesel. Now, in the process of going through everything that we did, we realized that the school buses, it would, it's very uneconomical for them to go all the way over to Capital Drive to fuel up because they're stored at the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they get very low mileage, and you have to pay people to drive over there, so it becomes even less economical. So, and also, you know, there are occasions when we have vehicles downtown, so we're gonna leave one above ground diesel tank at the eight Roxbury Road site for the buses and for anybody in that neighborhood that needs diesel.
Thank you.
Town, town, town vehicles, of course.
Okay. I suppose the only drawback would be it's not a centrally located area, but it sounds like you've tapped out all of the.
We, we, we did a lot of research and this, this, these are really the best options that we have going.
Okay.
I don't, I won't find the one I care about, cause I'll make one if you want.
We're, we're currently working on a full-blown plan that we're gonna come to the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night and, and talk about the entire Roxbury Road site. Uh, cause it's not as aesthetically pleasing as a lot of people would like, and so we have a plan for the Board of Selectmen. Our current plan for the salt shed is to get the salt out of it, clean it up, and use it for cold storage for vehicles that are unsightly to get them out of the, get them out of the outside. It's actually not a bad-looking building. It's, it's a wood, it looks like an old barn, actually, if you take away the distractions around it. It's a very good-looking building. So, our, our plan is to clean that up and use it for cold storage of vehicles or, or something else. We're not exactly sure.
That's what I pass that every day. I have a question.
Yes.
Is Waterford still involved in this salt? They were, uh, you reported they were tearing down their building?
When we originally started this process, we wanted to team up with Waterford on a bid.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we're going with a salt dome, a salt dome, a round dome-like structure, which are very economical and very reasonably priced. We tried to get Waterford on board, but they, they had space constraints, and they had to build a rectangular building, so we could not use the same bids. So, our, we're getting our bids in actually Thursday. And what our current plan is our Public Works Superintendent has talked to Waterford, and what Waterford hopes to do is as soon as we get ours built, we fill it with salt, that they can partially use our old salt shed for the, for the fall and possibly part of the winter as theirs is being constructed.
Okay.
So, we've worked out a little, uh.
So, what's in it for us?
I was just gonna ask that question. Do we get it?
We're on the same school. What do we get out of it?
Do we, what, no, it's not done out of the goodness of our heart.
We're, we're good neighbors. Um, we are, you know.
We are.
If, on, on instances, we break a garbage truck, Waterford alone does a garbage truck, they break a garbage truck, we'll loan them a garbage truck, so we have a very good working relationship with Waterford.
Okay.
And we just wanna continue on in that fashion.
No, I think every town should do that exactly. Alright, are we ready?
A motion that, uh, pursuant to section eight twenty four of the general statutes, the planning commission of the town of Eastlime, exercising its authority and having reviewed the proposal for the proposed salt shed and fueling facility at eight Capital Drive and a fueling facility at eight Roxbury Road. Referenced in, uh, Eastlime Planning Commission memo dated, from, from Mr. Gaisel, dated September first, two thousand fifteen. A motion to find the aforementioned proposal consistent with the two thousand and nine plan of conservation and development, specifically Article six point, objective six point one, to provide facilities and services for municipal government that meet future needs and maintain the quality and range of municipal services and facilities designed by the townspeople while maintaining and diversifying the tax base. And objective seven point one, to provide for the safe, convenient, and efficient movement of people in the salt shed.
Thank you, Frank. That's the motion. Do we hear a second?
I'll second.
Rita, got it? Is there further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Very well. Uh, and then we'll go back to back. You've got another item of business?
Um, you have another document in front of you for an eight dash twenty four review for the sewer extension on Park Place. Hopefully you guys have that, and there's a, while Gary's looking for the map, there should be a map that looks like this.
Oh, we don't have that. We have that?
You should have that.
Yeah?
You should.
Uh, I'm looking through the packet. I see the salt shed. I see... Uh, Bill Shear's note, and that goes right to the eight twenty four for, for the proposed sewer extension. And then it's, uh, yep, there's a note, and there it goes. It, they did.
Bingo.
Yeah.
Okay, so how far is it running? Oh, one more the way in the back.
Yeah.
Right here. Okay. I hate these big things.
I'm hoping Gary can find that. We can put it up on the screen to give you a little, little explanation here. This is one of the few situations where we actually had a win-win-win.
A triple win?
A triple win.
Oh, wow.
I, I very rarely see these.
Uh, it looks like, uh, because this is so reduced, Mr. Gaisel's gonna try to find us a jumbo version of the rule.
Why, we, we don't need a jumbo version.
Do you think you have a Gary, or should I just go?
I would just go forward.
Alright, this was originally approved in, uh, two thousand and eleven. The developer of... What's that thing called, Gary? Village Crossing.
The developer of Village Crossing, if you're familiar with Park Place off of, uh, one fifty-six, it comes in and it's a loop, then it comes back out. Village Crossing is an affordable housing complex, I believe, that needed to tie into sewers. They got approval to run sewers out to one fifty-six. We originally wanted them to go down Park Place, go through somebody's yard and tie into a sewer line that we have over behind the properties over here. The benefit of this is, as part of their original approval, we made them give us land for a pump station. Because if Park Place ever wanted to tie into sewers, they would've had to run gravity down to this pump station. The pump station would lift the sewage up, and then it would've gone gravity down to one fifty-six. We wanted them to go this way because it would've been all gravity all the way, no pump station. For the pump station comes generators, electricity charges, noise when the generators are running. They're just another piece of infrastructure that we just don't want. If you can, gravity's free and it works all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So, during the course of this, the developer realized that, hey, you know, this is actually probably a cheaper alternative to him anyway, to go the gravity way. So, he worked with one of the property owners and got an easement through their yard.
Which property is that?
Uh, number twenty-nine Park Place.
Is that a private residence?
It's a private residence. There was no way to get there without going through a private residence via an easement. So, the developer acquired an easement from the private, private owner, and now the developer is gonna install this entire sewer line all the way down to here. Now, that gives the option of any one of these properties the ability to tie in at a future date, and they don't have to pay anything now. They would have to pay an assessment when they tie in, they don't have to pay anything now, so they get the benefit of having sewage, sewage disposal potential in front of their house without having to pay for the install. So, that's a win for them. The other thing is it's a win for the Eastlime Water Department or Sewer Department because we don't have the potential future infrastructure of a pump station with a generator, fuel, electricity. We've got gravity on our side. And also, the residents of town of Eastlime benefit because we have a better mousetrap. So, that's why I think it's a win-win-win. Great. What's the mousetrap? It's a better mousetrap. That's a term, maybe I'm getting old.
No, I, I know.
You're not getting old.
A what? Okay.
I just have a quick question. Uh, Patagonia River.
Yes.
How far away is that?
Look behind you maybe, Gary.
The existing sewer line, looking at this, looks like it's probably thirty to forty feet away from the Patagonia River, when we're tying it, we're tying into the existing sewer line, so our infrastructure is farther away than the existing sewer line from the Patagonia River.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a, um...
I was gonna say, you didn't get a, say.
There's a, a motion, but I, I, I do have, uh, time to review this, and, uh, looking at the death of six point four, uh, P O C D, um, and obviously provide sanitary waste disposal in a manner that protects the town's resources. Uh, obviously, sanitary sewer is a better option than subsurface waste disposal, uh...
Just so you know, in that neighborhood, there have been three or four sewage system failures already. So, there, there are issues. The only way a person would be required to tie in is if the san-, town sanitarian deemed their system was failure and made them tie in. Otherwise, it's just an option on their part. So, but there, there are already people that wanna tie in because they have issues with their onsite sewage disposal systems.
What is, uh, what are we looking at for a connection fee? What's the rate?
They just set that at the last water and sewer meeting that I was not at.
Okay.
I, I, it's, it's consistent with, with all other sewer assessments. I.
I wanna say a few years ago it's six grand.
No, it's not. It's, it's.
Higher, lower?
Higher.
Okay.
Higher than that?
I don't, I, I don't even wanna hazard a guess because I, I don't. I wanna say nine or eleven.
Do you have a expectation of how many will be tying in as of now?
I think there's two or three that wanna tie in immediately, but, and then everybody else says the option in the future, so.
At that price?
Well, when your septic system's failing and you get a price to fix it.
You'll pay anything.
It, it becomes.
Paramount.
A very va-, a viable alternative.
You have to replace the system, replace, you have to evacuate all the, all material out.
Mm-hmm. That's.
And then bring in all new material, uh, if you don't have area for reserve system, you'll get these lots, some are considered, then they're small, they're half acre lots, maybe smaller. So, the area for reserve systems is really not there.
And it also takes away all your maintenance for your septic system, septic tank in the future, so there, once you tie in, there's no maintenance.
The personal experience, I know septic system, I repair it, take rent, so.
So, if they're, I'm sorry.
If, if in the future, we had to put this sewer line in, like, say, this, that so many people, their systems failed, and the health department said, you really should put sewers there, everybody would've had to pay and be required to tie in. It would've not, no longer been an option. It would've been, everybody's paying, everybody's tying in.
But if it, if it becomes a backup issue in, in the property, a sewer, I mean, I had it, so I know, uh, do you have that completed or fixed or done or cleaned? Is that the responsibility of the property owner, or is it the responsibility of the town?
They can do it, sew it back up?
Yep.
If the. Go ahead.
So, according to the building code, you're supposed to put a, a valve or a flapper.
I know.
That will stop.
Trust me, I know, no.
All that, that's a, that's a building code required, but, uh, you know.
There's a point you're all up to in including in.
If you don't install this, this valve, then you're gonna end up with that fluid coming out of your toilets and your sinks.
No, no, no. She's talking about it clogs and it won't go down, not backs up, right?
No, back up into my tub.
Separate issue.
If it clogs, it backs up.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, so that.
If you're running the sink upstairs, it comes out downstairs.
I don't know about that.
Yes.
All I know is where I saw it. Okay. Alright.
And, uh, thank you, Bill, for showing us that there, uh, just like, um, that previous one we were saying, compared to what, you know, what's the other option? In this case, you've got them both drawn for us, and they, you guys, I think, did a good job weighing out the, uh, cost benefit of, of the two options, and, uh, like you said.
We've been fighting for this one for a year, so.
Gotta fight for the triple wins.
Yeah, but it's good.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
Motion that the planning commission approved the Connecticut general statutes eight twenty-four submission by the town of Eastlime for, known as a village crossing sewer extension at Park Place, documented dated August twelfth, two thousand and fifteen. Um, sewer system extension to the proposed village crossing, village crossing development on Park Place in Niantic, Connecticut, finding that proposal to be consistent with the plan of conservation and development as amended specifically objective six point four, to provide sanitary waste disposal in a manner that protects the town's resources.
Second?
Joan has the second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Six zero zero.
Thank you very much, and thank you for moving me up.
Yep. So, with respect to our agenda, we're now, uh...
Where are we?
Done with the eight twenty four, and we have to hop back to subdivisions and re-subdivisions. We took action on the Roger Dawson application. B is the application of Wayne and Patricia Fraser, twenty-two Gurley Road. We opened the public hearing tonight. We continued the public hearing tonight, so that as an agenda item now is, we skip it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that brings us to C, that Nottingham Hills subdivision says, there's a loose piece of paper that was handed out just prior to the meeting, containing a resolution that was drafted by our town attorney. Mr. Gaisel, could you give us the background?
Uh, basically, as per the settlement agreement that we entered into, the title of real estate, international development LLC, um, they agreed to allow the town to use the public improvement bond to complete Upper Kensington, uh, to get step necessary to, to supplement the division. Uh, so, in order to actually withdraw the money from the bank, I need your formal resolution to commission.
Okay. Uh, we're looking for a motion to read this into the record.
Alright, resolution for the Nottingham Hill Bonds stat-, status. Based on the agreement between New England National LLC and the town of Eastlime, it was agreed that the town of Eastlime is to use the public improvement bond for the completion of Upper Kensington Drive. As much, uh, as much I move to withdraw the public improvement bond in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for the completion of public improvements needed for Upper Kensington Road and hereby authorize any assurances the bank may have need to release said funds to the town of Eastlime.
Thank you, Rita. We have a resolution, uh, or a motion. Looking for a second.
Second.
France, the second. Is there further discussion?
I have one question.
Sure.
Did, uh, the town attorney write this? Is that what we stated?
He, uh, the conversation with me.
Yes.
He drafted this, uh, Mark Locke, our special counsel.
Oh, sorry, not a town attorney, not a com.
Not, not that, no.
Okay.
Who was that?
Mark.
Mark Locke.
Okay.
Who's our special counsel for, um...
Bonds and resolutions.
Anything that has to do with these parcels, right, Nivalde National.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Uh, I have a question. As such, the sentence that begins with "as such, I move to withdraw," shouldn't that be the planning permission to actually withdraw?
Great.
Yeah, you can substitute.
Good point. Roseanne, thank you.
Substitute the word planning for the word I in the motion on Nottingham Hill. Thank you.
So, it would be moves, right?
Yep, so strike I move and, and put in, uh, the planning commission moves.
I believe, uh, it's not other case to go, but drive.
Drive.
Uh, you amend your motion, Rita?
Yes, I, I amend my.
Fran, do you amend your second?
Yes.
Very well. Any, any further, I was just gonna say I move, she said planning commission, and she just missed the spot.
Oh, okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries six zero zero. Brings us through the Nottingham Hills. And that brings us to our zoning referrals. Application of Theodore A. Harris for GDL Residential B LLC. Application for a text amendment to the Eastlime Zoning Regulation, Section eleven A nine two two C, to increase the number of units from two eighty to four hundred. This is a zoning referral, so the Planning Commission's directive is to issue a report, which zoning will deliberate on. The public hearing refers to when the zoning... When the zoning commission is going to open the hearing?
Yeah, the Republican public hearing on a text amendment. That public hearing has since been moved from originally on September third, now October fourth.
Okay. So we've got a lot of time there. I don't think we need to take any action on that tonight. I do want to note that Mr. Mulholland, our zoning officer, had invited myself and any commission members that we'd like, or that would like to attend, to go to a zoning meeting.
Really?
Yes. On the seventeenth, when he is orchestrating a review of this specific text amendment. It deals with the Gateway Development District. It deals with the history of the Gateway Development District, and he thought that it would be helpful to anyone who attended and to hear, hear the story. So I'll be proud, and I'm going to plan to attend that on September seventeenth.
September, okay.
If, I think what I'm going to ask Mr. Geisell to do is to post it as a special meeting for our Planning Commission in case a quorum were to show up. If four of us show up, I think we'd end up creating a, a meeting, right? If we all sit in the audience of the zoning meeting.
Well, we know I'm going.
And if Rita goes and I go, that's half, so I think just to be safe, why don't we, why don't we post it as a meeting? If you don't show up, okay, right?
Well, if you all show up in this quorum, I should be announced, yeah, and post it.
And the minutes would be us sitting in an audience and not talking. Okay.
Can I just open with one, one question or start of a discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
I just remember about two years ago, Gateway added about five units because they found there was a way to use the land in a legitimate and compliant fashion. We only added like five units. Are we giving up retail space as this happens, or is, is there a big picture that you can offer as we open the discussion?
Well, I did hand out, you said, uh, July seventeenth, uh, the overview of, uh...
It's just such a huge growth, and we were, we discussed five two years ago.
I'll, I'll try to get that in PDF that you would do in more detail. But my understanding is, in discussion with the developer, that they're going to, essentially the additional one hundred and twenty units, or maximum of four hundred, to the zone, are going to go just south of the last two units that...
The yellow.
Yeah, it's on the picture.
Yeah, it's on the picture. So my understanding is that it's not going to take up any space for the commercial end bit. I think the concern that we have is, where is the commercial? They promised us, you will, commercial development.
Along with traffic growth and safety and other things, I...
I can say that Costco has been in discussions with the town regarding architecturals, they intend to be approved, master plan, so we're going to rely on those.
I have a question. Is that Cease Said Correct Order lifted yet on the existing property?
It is not lifted yet.
Okay.
There, I have a meeting up there on Thursday to go over all the items that are contained to those orders and the litigation work that's required to have been completed by August fifteenth. So hopefully, my next webinar, which happens September eighth, they will bill the course of the commission that those items have been addressed and the areas they were asked.
Tell me when I can ask a question.
Yeah?
Why is it that they need these extra units? How come?
Um, there, you know, I, from what I gathered, is, you know, they're, they're residential developers. And for units of the money, they, they, they cost, they, they indicated the cost to complete this fine road that would run from one sixty-one out to, all the way through development up to East Side Road. So you see there, this is a poked road. In order to...